...to the board meeting Monday August 6, 2018. I'm Kevin McLeod.
Trustee Lyman?
Here.
Trustee Selleck?
Here.
Trustee Wood?
Here.
Trustee Hall?
Here.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
We do all want to welcome the President of the Village. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where whose stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. That takes us to our first item which will call upon agenda items. Would you like to address the board?
Terry Knabey, over three eleven, here in San Antonio.
Where is that at?
Here.
Where are we going?
I mean, you never know. I ask that the trustees really give this a lot of thought because the clues can develop certain key pieces of property that are very visible to the public. It's historical, and I'm talking about Water Street. It's an entrance way to the village. I've had a lot of conversation over the weekend with a lot of municipal people, the business owners in town, who are concerned about Water Street being pulled off. I have a lot of concerns about that. I ask that you guys really, really think about this, and go into the part then, bring anyone to call it that these projects. It's gotta be a particular type of person. You want to spend the money and make it historically correct. It can't be like other projects, like Penny Avenue. It can't be made out of plastic. It's gotta be brick and mortar and stone. It's gotta look good. It's important because it's right there in the village. So, please, think about this hard and long when you make your decision. Thank you.
All right, good. Moving on to agenda, we have a motion on items A of people.
I'll make a motion to approve the board meeting minutes dated June 18, 2018. And a motion to approve the special approval of board meeting minutes dated July 1, 2018.
Trustee Lyman?
Yes.
Trustee Selleck?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to all the villages. None of you believe this or first agenda item here. This is one of the part-time police officers, John Lawson.
Good evening, folks. It's my pleasure and excited to announce the newest member of our police department here, John Lawson. I'll tell you a little bit about John before we get to sworn in. John is a thirty-four-year veteran of law enforcement. Currently, he's employed with the College of Lake County Police Department as a detective and assigned to the Lake County Major Crimes Task Forces to lead homicide investigator. John retired in November 2015 from Roselle PD with almost twenty-nine years of service. During his career there, he was assigned to the Investigations Division as a detective in nineteen ninety-eight, and in May of twenty oh-three, he became an administrative sergeant. As an administrative sergeant, John was the department's Public Information Officer and the Accreditation Manager. In two thousand nine, he was assigned to Investigations Division supervising a team of detectives in school resource office. In two thousand twelve, he was then assigned to Control Division as a Washington commander holding the civil service rank of Sergeant. John holds a Master of Science degree and Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal and Social Justice from the Lewis University and an Associate in Criminal Justice from Harvard College. He attended Northwestern University where he successfully completed School of Police Staffing Command, supervised police personnel in traffic and as traffic reconstructionist, as well as several advanced criminal investigation courses and leadership courses throughout his career. John has been married to his wife Laura for thirty years, who's sitting to his left here, and they have two wonderful adult sons, Robert and Kevin. In a moment, John will be sworn in as a part-time police officer, and after successful completion of field training program, he will primarily serve as the department's administrative officer assigned to updating and creating written directives, working towards future department evaluation. After taking the oath, John's son, Eastundy Police Officer Kevin Lawson, will be heading out his badge.
That didn't even sound very good. You don't wait for your shirt?
Sorry, I didn't tell you you were here.
Yes, I was.
I, Tom Lawson.
I, Tom Lawson.
Do so and I swear.
Do so and I swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Eastundy.
And the ordinance of the village of Eastundy.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
For the village of Eastundy.
For the village of Eastundy.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
This is a bit of a switch. It's usually the father painting the badge on his son, so you have to appreciate the irony here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this is your next item here, which is discussion of the connection of the road train. So we're gonna make a, um, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Discussion in consideration of a motion authorized to use the village funds to break action of road train Emmanuel Coleman's goal to propose a storm sewer.
Storm.
All right, we have somebody that's on.
I said someone.
Okay.
Someone, yes.
You have a second, John?
Trustee Lyman? Okay, so we do have representative from Lutheran Emmanuel here. Chris Watt is here. Within your board packet, there's a letter that was submitted by Emmanuel Church, so you understand the issue there. There is a connection from the school into the religious part sewer system. Our village code requires that private connections be rerouted at the time when the village needs to change its infrastructure, which it did back in, um, twenty thirteen, and at this time, the connection, uh, was discovered due to a sinkhole, and the church is requesting that the village authorize the use of its funding to pay for the relocation of the private connection. Director Cutter, do you have anything to add to that?
Not much in addition to that, Watson, but I don't know. The church, Chris Watt, through the ZO again. The church has just been requesting that for the seventy years since the gym has been built, that this situation with our storm water was working fine. When the Vanir Street was rebuilt, we were never notified that that needed to be changed or reconnected. That, I don't think anybody knew the situation there. So, after it was all said and done, I checked up to what sinkage was going on. I heard nothing, it was just unsettling, so I had my, just doing a little, well, it got worse and worse over time because there was actually a storm, what it called, catch basin there, was attached to, and it's still attached, to the church's drainage. But someone filled it in, obviously unknowing what it was for, and now we have this sinkhole that occurs. So, the church is requesting, you know, that the village takes care of that because now we have to reopen up streets or a curb and such, it's gonna be far more expensive to do. Now, what if we had known about it prior to Vanir being redone? So, but, the administrator Johnson has offered a pain, split it on half, which we do appreciate that thought, and we would like the village to carry the whole shoot match, as we kinda think that, you know, had we been aware of it, because I had it off the pass earlier, it cost everybody a lot less money, and really, it worked fine until the village changed.
Nice question. How is it that you didn't know about this? If I were to hook up my sump pump to the village line, which is illegal to do.
Right.
And something happened as a result of that, it's gonna be on me as a homeowner. How does that differ from moving?
Well, seven years ago, it was hooked up to the system, and it is what it is, and there was a catch basin there. I can't imagine a catch basin just came out of nowhere.
It's a PDC line, I doubt seriously.
I, I understand, but we haven't changed it.
So did.
Exactly my point, and it wasn't us because...
And it wasn't the village.
I gotta believe a lot. Well, how would we have changed, when would we have done that? I mean, I've been there for seven years as an employee, and I've been there for another twenty years as either a trustee, on the board, or with the school board, and that actual where that, the parking lot back there is, we just recently redid that two or three years ago, we got, I had the exact, it was not done last year. That's the first time anybody that I've known has even touched that, so I don't know if that PDC pipe came from there. I truly don't know. But was it done back when you guys did Vanir?
I don't know, couldn't tell.
But, but, but see, if it were about an office, it would be a clay tile hung in, because seven years ago, they didn't have PDC.
Right, so my thought is, is that it doesn't really make sense that the village would have hooked it up there legally. If it's kind of like your roof, technically from Kane County standards, the water that comes onto your property is yours, you would have to do whatever it takes to keep it retained, mitigate, whatever.
And, and our contention is that was done seventy years ago.
If I can interject here, just one second. Little, little history on that. I don't think the village was aware of this either, Chris. I mean, seventy years ago, I don't know who decided what, can't make that call.
Who knows?
Well, when Vanir was reconstructed four years ago, maybe, when we were on there.
About one fifteen years.
Yeah, obviously, we weren't aware of that connection, and so the roadwork was bad and everything went on, and we weren't aware that that pipe was there, and neither were you, obviously, until just recently.
Right, because there had to be a pipe coming out of there to get it into the village, sue the rest.
Correct, but yeah, not knowing that that existed, right? Not knowing that that existed, when they did the roadwork, that was a van. Now, if we had known at the time, or if you had known at the time, then we could have probably made easier accommodations and it would have cost less money. Your point is absolutely correct, since the parkways and everything else has been built in, it's gonna take more time and more effort and more money to go back and, you know, to reconnect the line that neither of us knew was there before our times, and that's the, right, that was it.
Well, nobody had to have filled it in when the Vanir project was done. It had to have been filled, because...
Filled, yes, but not reconnected.
Right, but I mean, wouldn't somebody have said, hey, there's a catch basin there, wherever that goes to? And all of a sudden, it's flowing gravel?
The catch basin did have an outlet, and that outlet was terminated, and the thought process, correct me if I'm wrong, engineering, that there was nothing else, nobody realized there was something flowing into that catch basin, or your connection flowing in.
Correct.
It was a, a current inlet in the intersection, and we just thought it was a pipe from that inlet out to the storm sewer. Didn't see any pipe coming into it. Whole catch basin's kind of filled up and...
Sure, you all agree, we think when we do all projects of any kind here, we uncover all kinds of pipes that aren't on the board, and they go all kinds of places, and most of them are open, and then we don't know what it is, and since it wasn't part of the scope of the job, the company that we contract to for that is wanting to do what, what it looks like is, you know, what we plan to do. So my point being that, having said all that, we can't uncover that history, we didn't know about when the roadwork is done, because it's more expensive. Now, the administrator had said, okay, let's split the cost, and it sounds like...
We were asking that because what worked for seventy years, which we can only assume was approved, because I'm sure we had done it back then, doesn't work today.
Right.
And we didn't make change.
Certainly.
So, hold it if you did. You hadn't have made a change, or we wouldn't have a sinkhole.
Well, we, I mean, there's...
You maybe didn't realize you made the change.
But it's not on us to make sure that that's the case. I mean, if this is an illegal hookup, and let's face it, it is.
I, I wouldn't call it illegal, I'm sure somebody's... I mean, improper, and improper might be one thing. I don't know what engineer decided to do that seventy years ago, but it's not like, you know, the church is out in the middle of the night, dug eight feet down, put it in, put a brick. I mean, that didn't happen. Someone, somewhere around here had approved that, or maybe it wasn't even an approvable thing.
It's certainly possible that it was approved just like today, if you were gonna come to the village and say, hey, can we hook up to your pipe? We could probably have a discussion around this and say yes or no, and that's basically what we're doing at this point.
This is a line coming off your roof into the stormwater system of main line at Vanir. I'm really struggling how you did not know about this, how nobody in your records would have had no knowledge that this line was coming off your building, into the ground, into the stormwater system.
That's probably not something that they focus a lot of their attention on.
Apparently not, but I don't see how this is...
If somebody were to come to us today and say, hey, we've got a, we've got a gray water cache that we want to tap in, and if we approved it, they would, would they then incur the cost of that tapping, since it's a private line?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so if it was, was brand new, you know, let's say it didn't exist, you were coming to the village saying you want to tap into the private line of the infrastructure, they would pay for it?
Correctly, right, sure.
Which is what we did, when we redid, when we took down something, I saw the brush building, and we actually were kind enough to let, paid the measure, pay their storm water off of their roof, so it wouldn't just flood everything downtown. We put it down through our wastewater, put in new catch basins, and reconnected to the catch basins of that, and we paid that, because that's what we're supposed to do.
Well, here's, just so you know what my head said, I'm having a difficult time saying, well, it was done seventy years ago, so we pay for it now. I mean, you know, if that matter was seventy years ago, we'd heck know what's under the ground anymore. I don't know that anybody, either one of us was necessarily at fault, to be honest, just because it's an old piece of, it must not be that old, it's PVC, but at some point it was put in, I don't necessarily think either side was at fault, and usually in a situation like that, you split it maybe. I, you don't pick up the entire bill yourself, you split it. That, that's just what my head said, so we would probably be able to know on maybe the entire cost.
And just to reiterate, our purpose of bringing this to the board is we have to tell you what our code says, and our code says that the private entity pays, so that's what we're looking for. That's why it's here, so that you can overlook your code if you choose, if you think that it's significant, or if you think they're legal in this instance.
First off, like you said, obviously, I don't see this as a problem of open passage because it's been doing it for seventy years. So it's not like reconnecting, this is gonna be a burden on our system. Let's get past that, say that the board was waived and allow that to be reconnected.
What's the point? We have to, you're gonna rehook this up?
I'm not saying, well, I don't see why we wouldn't allow this, but the nice question is not, is, you know, are we interested in paying? And my, my answer to that would be, you know, it runs on the board's decision.
So you, you wanna...
If they were willing to pay for this, would we allow them to reconnect? Let's ask that question.
Absolutely not. You want to compound an error that doesn't belong to the village by giving it...
We're not compounding an error, we're reconnecting something that was in place for seventy years. I don't say that is compounding an error.
A storm sewer connection is not illegal. It would be illegal that the storm sewer went into the sanitary services, but a storm sewer, a storm sewer is correct.
But we don't allow private hookups to...
We don't, like, to a business park, all those lots, go where you...
Fine, so if that's off the table, then the only question is, is does the board have any appetite for, for waiving this fee?
I'd be okay with splitting it off. Is this greenpeacey?
Okay, it's white.
So I need, I need to hear from the members on that right side, if they're really interested in waiving and splitting and paying off.
But, not at all. I don't believe this is our issue.
So it seems to me that we don't have an issue with rehooking this up.
Thank you.
There's no problem with that. We will have to work with you, help get out with this door, but then we might, but we would ask that you put in something. And I think half is, what's the total amount we're talking about?
Like thirty-four hundred dollars.
For the total?
Thirty, thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two fifty, so we're talking half of that.
Correct.
I don't think that's on that.
From the church's standpoint, you know, we try to connect, and we've taken an awful lot of ugly out of our village in the last couple of years, and when we drive down that, you know, between us and maybe the others, we made that block look pretty good, and so we're just, we were just asking for a little extra help. If that can't be done, can't be done, but we don't have the fine money underneath the church like some other church do, and we try to do the best we can. So just hoping that you could see yourselves mitigating it as much as possible, if half is as far as the village can go, we respect that and we'll go forward.
You, you mentioned that, and you're supporting a major measure, and they're on their gray water as well through this.
Yes, and they also pay for that.
Do maybe they don't?
Uh, they don't, unfortunately.
I'm just...
Thank you for that thought, but, but, but that's far down the way from where our board is, he would have nothing to do with that, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, let's know what we need to help with.
We need to ask then to be across the amount that you have.
So, what's the total?
Thirty-two fifty is the total, so splitting the diversity is one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
How many more should I add?
Uh, I don't know, I don't need to...
I think a motion to amend as necessary, rather than paying nothing, to pay half of the expense.
To ten dollars?
Yeah, out to the sixteen hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Say it. The answer's clear. Trustee Lyman?
No.
Trustee Selleck?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. So we need a vote, that, that motion was to amend the main motion, so at this point, we need a vote on the main motion, which is now manual to provide for the pay for the building. So we need one more vote.
I guess for on this, we're, we're...
Sixteen hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor now?
I'll make a motion. No, it's already, it's already down. We just need a vote.
Trustee Lyman?
No.
Trustee Selleck?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, that takes us on the legal seat. Somebody would make a motion, please?
I'm going to direct the legal seat negotiations regarding the Water Street project.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Okay, discussion.
Okay, so I'm about to pull up a PowerPoint presentation. Um, you did have information that was distributed to you, and we're going to be having Jack Fuddick and the architect Jeff Plunk. Jeff Plunk is here, and you're gonna be walking through the concept list. So, what we're looking for tonight is following the presentation, whether you would like to direct further discussions and negotiations on this project, because it does include sensitive items such as floating the intersection of Water Street and Route 72. It also involves a height of forty-eight feet or four stories, so we know that these concepts might be contentious, so we're trying to present a, a concept here in order to get further direction on whether we should continue and proceed. So I'll turn this over to Ken.
We've been discussing exactly what you're saying as far as we can look at putting any, rather significant building right on Water Street and to manage. One of the things that we would be doing in this in your packet is the property, purchasing your property, it's currently one East Main, front and corner of Water and Main, and that would become a, like Hart State Park area for use for the building, and then also, the building would be constructed actually on Water Street, as it is the property right on one East Main, is really not developed, I mean, it is in the floodway where maximum reinvestment into that property without significant changes in the, plus this floodway is fifty percent, so no one could, that's more than a hundred and forty thousand dollars in that property. So therefore, the, in discussions with the village, let's take a look at what options to do to develop that entryway to Eastundy, create something that is available to the village, and that's the discussion, how to start eating Water Street, where's the building there for out of the flood area, and turning the existing location of the building into more of a Parkway area in Hart State Park for the users of the building. So we are looking at both ways as well as far as building use, whether it's laying out, we have a schedule for a little, some retail, which would be front and seventy-two first floor, and we are looking at both options depending on how I think financially works out, whether the upper stories would be apartments or they would be companies, we are leading first concept, kind of, sort of, for the village, so that we can increase the tax base, much later the apartment building would be, but we are looking at both options and just determining the financial feasibility of that. So that little bit of background on how this came about, we're fortunate enough to engage with Jeff Plunk, Plunk Architects throughout Chicago. He is very involved with other projects in Geneva, in Seane Charles area, which I'm sure you guys are very familiar with, as well as projects throughout Chicago, and has a very excellent career to be along with knowledge in the construction aspect, so put him on board to help us out with this and create something excellent.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jeff Plunk, I have an architecture firm in Michigan Grant Avenue in the city of Chicago. I currently reside in Seane Charles, so I do a lot of traveling back and forth. My background, I went to school under, undergraduated at Iowa State University, graduated in nineteen ninety-two, I worked for large architecture firms up until nineteen ninety-nine, and then I went back to school at Syracuse University in Florence, Italy, and received my master's degree in urban design, and then I graduated and worked for Solomon Corral Event for five years. Since then, I started my own architecture firm, about fourteen years, and I teach in Florence, Italy, urban design, so.
Let's go through the presentation.
Keep it controlled and...
Did you...
Command and control, and you should bring it up to the full spot.
You see the first page of site location, Main Street, and Water Street. It's a very prominent site, so in thinking about what this design could be, you know, it was talked earlier about the presence on Main Street, on Water Street, being a gateway to the city of Eastundy. Another area photograph, they talk about this building existing right on, on the river in Army Court, an engineer, problems with redeveloping the site, the cost, and the site location. What we did here is this is a study on heights and buildings in the area. You can see in West India, the height of forty-nine feet for the building, you have another one of forty-four feet, across the river is one of thirty-five, and we're proposing one of forty...
What are, go back to that, Jeff. One of the items on the elevations there is the geography, which sees the GIS to determine the total on it. Where Emmis is, when Emmis, the building above existing, grade is four and a half feet tall, the grade there is seven twenty-four, the grade where we're proposing to put the new building would be about seven twenty-one point five, so you still have two and a half feet that Emmis is, even elevation wise, higher. So overall, Emmis will appear to be at fifty-one point five, and where we're at forty-eight, so Emmis is still a, you know, taller building than what we're proposing, and again, you're coming down from forty-nine, forty-four, thirty-five, on the corner there right by the river, but the geography does go up.
Another area flow graph. They talk about this building existing right on, on the river and Army Court of Engineer, problems with redeveloping the site, the cost and, um, um, the site location. What we did here is this is a study on heights and the buildings in the area. You can see in West India, the height of forty-nine feet for the building. You have another one of forty-four feet across the river, there's one thirty-five, and we're proposing one of forty. What, go back to that, Jeff.
One of the items on the elevations there is the geography, which is the GIS to determine the total on it. Where Emmett's is, when Emmett's a building above existing grade is four and a half feet tall. The grade there is seven twenty-four, the grade where we're proposing to put the new building would be about seven twenty-one point five. So you still have two and a half feet that Emmett's is, even elevation wise, higher. So overall, Emmett's will appear to be at fifty-one point five and where we're at forty-eight. So Emmett's is still a, you know, taller building than what we're proposing. And again, you're coming down from forty-nine, forty-four, thirty-five on the corner there right by Bank River. The geography does go up.
So from a site management standpoint, what we're looking at, setting the building off of the river approximately twenty-five to thirty-five feet. Um, depending on the plaza and the location of the foundation of the existing building. We, you know, the, the idea of creating a space, creating a public space, when it's thought about, you know, my studies in, um, urban architecture in Florence. You know, the idea of creating a piazza, a, a public space, a space that's more pedestrian friendly. Um, the idea of removing the traffic cars, creating buildings that actually talk to each other as opposed to just major thoroughfares for, for, um, autos and for smaller sidewalks. So the idea of bringing in public spaces along the west side with this public piazza for, well, we call a, a piazza or a plaza for the retail space. And then there'll be a private plaza for the residential space on the north side. And then on the east side, we would create a public plaza, a thoroughfare, very nicely lit up. We would have, it would be very stable to pedestrians, we're talking about havers, we're talking about a very pedestrian friendly thoroughfare. Connecting, um, Main Street to the north here, to, um, to the, to the street here. So the idea of creating this public space, the idea of creating, you know, offsetting the building off of the river and creating these beautiful views along the river and along the west side was very ideal in the design. Um, and also the scalability, thinking about how this building, it was talked about, you, the use of stone, the use of brick. And, um, we think it's important to create scalability to the building. So we're going to go through and show you how we, um, came up with these ideas to create a prominent building on a prominent corner acting as the cornerstone for, um, the village of East Dundee. So the plan, looking at the site plan, to the north, we would have sixteen open parking spaces. To the south of that, we have an area for five garage parking spaces, a trash enclosure, make sure that all the trash is enclosed into a building. So the idea of just an open trash enclosure wasn't really thought about, especially with all this, the, um, the sidewalks that we're creating, the public spaces that we're creating and that, you know, adhering to the riverfront and creating a nice riverfront on that area. You can see this sidewalk here that's creating the north and the south of, um, complex and development. And then here you see, we talked about is that, um, the private residential patio and then the public, um, what we're calling the public retail patio. And then on the east side, we have that, that territory. Creating a major retail entrance on the south side that's visible from Main Street, we thought was important. You know, if you're going to get a nice retailer or a cafe or a restaurant here, you know, they're going to want an identity on Main Street. So we thought that was important to create that identity. And then how do you, how do you block this, that space off if you've got, you're, you're creating a restaurant atmosphere? You don't want the cars off, off of Main Street driving by, you know, long day. And so to create a screen wall to, um, screen that area, you know? So the idea of making this an idyllic, idyllic setting along the river, um, that's not right on, you know, too really close to Main Street, so we're above seven feet. So the idea of screening that so you're not, you don't feel like you're right next to the street. And we're going to show you images how we created that. Looking at the first floor, we have retail, um, so Main Street's on the right, retail, three-sided. You know, it's important for retail to have a lot of glass, a lot of tall ceilings. We're looking at fourteen foot ceilings, fifteen footer floor from ground floor to first, to the center floor. And then the idea of creating, um, um, we talked about creating covered loggia. Term loggia is Italian, and that means creating an outdoor setting, outdoor colony that, um, you know, the ability to use outdoor spaces when it's raining, when it gets somewhat cold, you can close things off with screens, use, use of heaters. But doing an architectural aspect, doing it, um, you know, the idea of the loggia is, is, it's all architectural. It's creating an outdoor space that's a part of the building. And then on the north side, you see the use of the two-bedroom we have on the corner, it's also three-sided, and then we have a one-bedroom in the middle. And then the, um, this is the entrance lobby for, not only for the, you know, restaurant or retail, but also for the residences. And then there's a quarter, private quarter, but I'll go back here, for the, um, the residences to use that private terrace that we had talked about before. On the second floor, we talked about that loggia on the first floor, that, that covered walkway. The great thing about that is that on the second floor, you're a little bit higher, so the views of the west, the views of West Dundee, um, you're creating these beautiful views. So why not create an outdoor space for those residences, for those apartments on the second floor to take advantage of the setting sun, to take advantage of those beautiful views, views of the river, the beautiful views of West Dundee. And then what we have here from the layout is we have three two-bedroom, um, two baths. So one in the corner, one in the middle, and then one on the north side. And then you can see it's very efficient hallway, we have two, two stairways and then an elevator. The use, it was thought about the use of the elevator, who's going to be moving into this, into this apartment? And these apartments are condominiums. Um, we were thinking empty nesters, you know, that don't want to walk up flights of stairs. So the idea of bringing an elevator where they just come in, they go up to their apartment and they don't have to climb up any stairs, we thought that was important. And also the idea of, um, connection to the outside. So you're going to see in our studies of the exterior, we don't just like to add balconies to the outside. We want to, we want to create, um, the landscape to these balconies. We don't, we don't like to see the, the barbecues, we don't like to see the, the bicycles that are put on the terraces. So we create spaces where you could put these barbecues, you could put these bicycles storage, so it's hidden from the streets. So when you're looking at the building, you're looking at a beautiful facade with a setback in, um, we'll see that in. And also, in, in the garage areas, we're also going to be creating, um, large storage units for, for your apartments too. So it's going to be multiversal, not, not only just for the trash, but for the parking and for the storage for the. Third floor, it's a different unit mix. We have two bedrooms in the corner, and then we have one bedroom in, in the center, and then another two-bedroom in the morning. And then you can see here how we're setting back the terraces to create these alcoves, to set those, those barbeque grills, the storage areas of the, the chairs in, in the winter time. So, um, they're not seen from the street. So I, from, from an architecture standpoint, when you're coming from the west, right in east, towards East Dundee, you're seeing this beautiful building. You're not seeing, you know, a bunch of balconies with stuff on them. You're seeing balconies that are actually thought of, that are actually part of the architecture. And then on the top floor, we have, um, a three-bedroom on the north side and then a two-bedroom on the south side. So very efficient units. There, um, you know, the, the one bed, or two bedrooms average eleven hundred per feet, and one bedroom's average about six hundred per feet. So they're very efficient. And the idea is not to, um, you know, it's more of a European living lifestyle, you know, be a very efficient and have efficient, um, miller, storage, what have you within the unit. And the idea of floor-to-ceiling glass is also thought about. So you have smaller units, but the floor-to-ceiling glass makes the units feel larger. So when you're coming into these spaces in the typical condo building or apartment building, you have a small opening, you have a small window. What we're doing is we're changing that to where you have a larger opening that makes the space feel larger and you have a connection to the exterior. From an elevation standpoint, this is the west facade. Um, we talked about that loggia, that creation of that, that covered walkway where, um, you know, in the fall and the springtime at the restaurant, um, they have a cafe, they have tables. If it's raining out, it'd be great to be able to sit outside underneath this, this covered loggia. What does that do for the, the second floor creates a nice balcony for the second floor to have an outdoor living room set that, you know, sitting down, um, great views of the west and, some, setting sun. And then how do we address the riverfront? You know, we're creating a nice stone, um, you know, pilasters with open rails with, um, armatures that, you know, the idea of, um, um, flower baskets and hanging landscape is very important. It becomes part of the architecture. And from a, from a scalability standpoint, when you're walking down the street and you see these things, similar to when you're walking in Europe, in Paris or, or in Italy, you, you see the planter systems. You know, it's not a fixed planters, you can move them around. Our idea is create on the first floor an open plaza, but then have planters that are movable, so the space can change. You know, the tables can be moved around, they can change the, the table setting on, on the restaurant to a couch setting that they wanted to. So it's not fixed. You know, the idea of fixed landscape really prohibits, you know, the changeability of the design. So our thought of incorporating a lot of landscape, but using, um, planter systems and architecture to make that, that space change. The front, you could see, um, we're still working on the elevation on this. We need to bring, bring the scale down to, you know, especially at the, at the plaza level, um, where we have, you know, residential on the north end. And then this is off of Main Street. So the idea of creating a nice identity for this restaurant, retail, cafe space, and then this idea of bringing this colony over and creating a screen. So behind that screen, you know, whether we're treating that with landscaping or with some sort of ironwork, but behind that screen, you're going to, pedestrians are going to be able to walk by and see things going on. But it's, it's still going to give us so much private to where the, the people sitting at a table or, or, um, you know, sitting in a chair, they don't, they're not feeling they're, like they're right on Main Street. And from a restaurant perspective or cafe's perspective, we think that this is going to be, you know, a great sale for potential using. So what does that look like from an arrow perspective? You could see, we're not doing anything to this wall, and that's the key, is to, to leave that as is and, um, utilize this space as a garden space. Um, incorporating, you know, landscape, um, you know, pilasters along the wall and creating that openness that when you're sitting down, you're still, you still see the river. And then a screen on the north side, so here's the garage with our trash enclosure and the storage. Um, we have a separation from the building, but we are also creating a, a nice, uh, walkway that could be utilized by the public. And then here, we're setting the building back a little bit more just to create that buffer where, um, when you get to this building, it, it opens up. And then on the east side, um, you know, we'll, we'll show you what that looks like, but the idea of creating that, more of that Hardscape, that public space. So this would be part of the cafe, restaurant, retail, and then we have that loggia underneath. And then the northern portion would be private residence plaza. And then up a bit, up above, this is all second floor, um, terraces for that loggia units. We talked about, um, setting the, the balconies back, and you can see here, they, they don't look like they're average balconies. They're, they're more architectural, they're, um, they're setback, so you're not seeing the stuff that you typically see on balconies. The, the type of architecture, what we're creating is, you know, the tripartite idea, the, the base, the, the middle of the building and then the top. So it was thought of, um, you know, when we were talking about this development, let's create a building that is three stories and has a roof to it. So, um, this idea, this man's our roof, you know, it's a four-story building, but it looks like a three-story building. So, and that's in keeping with the scale of the neighboring buildings. So the idea of creating, um, um, space that's usable on that floor, um, but from a scalability standpoint, we're, we're adhering to the principles of architecture of doing a, a tripartite design. Here's what you see from Main Street. And that, that plaza that connects the, the south to the north, so you, um, you're right, from a traffic standpoint, we're not, we're not, we're not connecting the cars, so the cars are. But from a pedestrian standpoint, we're actually emphasizing. So we feel that this is going to be a great catalyst for this corner. So this, you know, future buildings towards the east are going to see this building and they're going to want to mimic the, the design and create those, you know, the niceties of the, of the plaza, the landscaping and hardscaping that we're creating. Talked about using materials at the base. We didn't want to bring this in limestone, we didn't want to bring the limestone down to the ground because, you know, wintertime, they're using a lot of salts, the limestone typically gets corroded. So our thought was to do, um, black absolute, creates a nice base, it's strong, it's durable, but then it, from a color perspective, it, it relates to the roof and it relates to, um, the color of our windows. And then you see here, we're using an antique brick, antique brick on the second and third stories with, um, accents of limestone. And then here's what you're seeing from. Oh, the roof is, is, is a metal, it's a corrugated, it's similar to when you're downtown, you see, um, some of the more elegant buildings, you have a, a metal, it's a metal sand seam, metal roofing system. So this is looking east towards, um, towards the building off of, off of the bridge on Main Street. So this is what you're going to see, you know, walking toward the scene, the greenery, the, the cascading of the, the building, the loggia and the facade of the building, so. And then here's our unit mix. So we're, we're looking at eleven units, um, total of twenty-one parking spaces, um, fifteen thousand five hundred per feet of, um, gross school area with a net of twelve thousand seven hundred twenty-five per feet. And we have a mix of one three-bedroom, two bath, uh, seven two-bedroom, two baths, and three one-bedroom, one baths, which is eleven units total.
Wow, what a great project. Unbelievable. I mean, this is what millennials want, this is what empty nesters want. Our neighbors still west are putting up apartments like two hundred and fifty on Route thirty-one, two hundred and sixty on Brand Road. We need to do more, more of this stuff. I'm a big yes.
A couple questions. Um, so the walkway that you posed on the east side of the building, how wide is that? That would be more of a public thoroughfare because on the riverside, it's, once you get to the building proper, there won't be access along the river.
So if you look here, we're approximately fifteen feet from corner here, but then it lines out to about ten or twelve feet.
One of the ideas also that, that has been discussed is, um, more of a long-term planning is right at the north end of the building is trying to create some sort of walkway that may connect downtown. So we start developing the connection between the river and the, and the downtown, one walk, you know, but yet a separated current. So just as an idea, I was throwing around with staff to go ahead and see what the, the long-term potential would be to develop a walkway right at the, uh, north of the building going over to River Street. And then also maybe there's a long-term plan to have another walkway going on the street, I forget what the, the street is, just on the north side of ATT there, same thing.
Right.
So you have a pedestrian movement that you start to, that gets to the residential, this is the activity. People also retail-wise, this future development will go along to the east of this building, you know, to keep that pedestrian movement between the culinary district downtown and future development reserve.
It wouldn't be so isolated, it wouldn't be isolated.
Correct. Here's you put a nice looking path, uh, brick pave or whether it's stamping or whatever, but you need to something nice and landscaping properly, you know, if you want to do some walking down, and that's what we need.
And you can see it right here with the, with the separation of the garage and trash enclosure. I mean, it's this idea of creating a, um, portal, a window to the river for, for pedestrians that we think is going to activate this year, you know, creating another connection to the downtown. So you have two, one that actually goes across the river and then one here that will terminate this nice looking, a smaller public piazza.
So my other question has to do with, um, the number of parking places and also the number of apartments. So you've got eleven apartments, um, are, and you've got sixteen parking spaces.
Wait, twenty-one, twenty-one.
Twenty-one parking spaces. Twenty-one parking spaces total. So are, if this were to become condos, would those, would there be heated parking spaces or are they open?
If it would be up in condominium, most likely, um, our unit count would drop as well. Because the, the individual buying condominium is going to want more space. So I'm thinking that if it was condominium, we're probably going to have seven or eight units actually. And we still have the twenty-two parking spaces, what we're going to, then the garages, so we have eight units in the building, the garages had increased to eight-unit garage buildings to five. the garages had increased to an eight-unit garage building instead of five. And then we would really, you garage with that, and then the balance of the parking would be...
Or the retail and...
Probably for the residence, because what we want to do is be able to have two bedrooms, two car, either 1.5 is the average actually, even if it was a guest room.
So your plan right now is not to support any parkings for the retail?
The retail itself would, what we'd like to do is use the public lot, but it's just about, I'm pretty sure they're looking to do this.
Trustee Molly, our quote actually doesn't require, doesn't have parking requirements in the downtown for the retail?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Correct, thank you for clarification. So if the idea is, I mean, maybe the quote needs some improvement, but the idea is to encourage and encourage shared parking opportunities, that's fine. But the municipal lot is underutilized, but we would look in that more depth than being through the process if we were to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are, we're motioning on the floor. This is basically, we're not approving anything, we're not voting on anything. All we're doing at this point in the long is directly need an affair to see what negotiations. That's what the motion on the floor is. So you already have a motion in the second?
I can give a little disclaimer too.
Yeah.
This is to be considered draft. There's a lot of work, and there's a lot of unknowns going forward, so don't consider this to be a promise. The developer has to see if they can make the numbers work, but they just want a direction, part of spending more funds and taking more village and whether to continue discussing this project.
What's the confidence level that this is not work?
It works, what way, departmental or community?
Well, I realize that, but I'm just saying that, you know, if more investigation or work or research or whatever has to be done to determine whether or not this is going to be able...
It's financially feasible.
It's financially feasible, and we're in a position to go ahead with the project after working with the village and going through punitive processes every time.
But we need to negotiate also. We will be bringing in a new spin resolution as a part of the town district. And so there's a lot of unknowns and variables in that capacity.
I'm sorry, I have one other question. Have traffic studies been done? I personally think that's a really dangerous corner and intersection. I'm having German it myself. So do we have, will traffic studies be required or anything with IDOT? Or because we're coming out of seventy-two, is this considered just village streets only?
IDOT probably wouldn't have a concern with the rapid, in that terms to their roadway system. We might have to take a look at overstreet though, see if it's going to be a first of its own.
Which are not to street.
Right now it's restricted, right turn elements.
River street's a controlled intersection versus this one is.
Well, and it doesn't go through to the south side of the street either, so that's closed off. So there's a nice symmetry that would happen because of this, you know, and nobody would be cut off.
Speaking of the south side, this project would have nothing to do with the structure across the street on the south side.
Correct.
Okay, so are there any driveway issues between areas of this stuff? Do we have vehicles?
Between one and this?
These would stink and everything. Be required to get. And sort of pass the way through that. We're talking 15 feet at the road, of course, that's fine, but...
They do have, they do have entrance to their parking lot off that end, but their parking, their entrance is actually kind of a non-conforming entrance. They drive over AT&T's property, kind of around a overhead line, there's a pole. And so what we would probably do if we, the discussions here, is to divert their access to the municipal lot, to their parking lot. And so actually it would improve their access, and that's something we would have to talk to them about, take through. Correct, because they technically do not have a proper driveway into the parking right now. They actually drive across AT&T's. So they would enter north of the Dairy's. Correct, and then they would drive through the municipal lot. So maybe they would have... Correct, they would direct like over this entrance here.
They're going to have to...
They do not.
So again, preliminary discussions, this is the first time you guys have seen this. Obviously, we have a lot of questions, a lot of needing afterwards. Right now, the motion is assembled to direct administration to proceed with negotiations on this project and see what happens. Anything else? Kathy.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Sal?
Yes.
Trustee what? Yes. Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Molly?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, very good. You like Dylan? Side of line here is a motion to accept a proposal on mosquito management. I don't have a motion on IDOT.
I think the movement would accept a proposal for mosquito management for a mosquito aid.
Second?
I thought we...
We have a... Well, we asked for more information, which you received from the head. One of the things that we had asked for was do the neighboring community do this? And for the most part, some do and some don't. I guess the question that I would have at this point, our personal link of here, why even bother doing this unless this is an extra question?
As well, a question I have, are the cats that King County is providing to us? A little box. One is, is that sufficient to, is the number that they're giving us sufficient to do the entire village for that larval stage abatement?
I believe it would be more than 220 cats bases, so we may have to purchase another box of burkets. We have approximately $800 per case of 220 burkets.
Okay, so...
The president kind of may give us an additional work ethic if we ask for them.
Okay, so I mean, I'm thinking that that system in conjunction with this adult stage abatement, if it is 50%, like it's a protected, then chances are we're probably going to have some effect.
Absolutely.
But I'm just wondering if that larval abatement method is, I mean, are they just giving us, here's a little sample of what it can do, whereas, I mean, we're going to need a thousand more of what they're giving us?
No.
Is it enough to do the village for one cycle?
One additional box would, would more than cover all catch cases. Case of 220, but an additional case would more than cover additional, all catch cases.
So do we know how many cycles, if you will, of mosquito? I think they hopefully allow, they'll be adult, but how many repetitions, if you will, do they go through with this again?
Here's what's interesting, the environmental health supervisor provided a straight indicator that during, mosquitoes are worse during the hottest dry seasons. When you have a summer like ours, who had fairly frequent heavy rain events, you see, tend to see fewer adult mosquitoes because of what happens is the precipitation keeps the water moving in our catch basin, in other ponding areas. So you tend to see fewer mosquitoes in a season where you have more rain events, where you have a really hot, dry, it's raining during hot, dry summer drought seasons. Those are seasons where you typically see higher volume of mosquitoes.
But the standing water is an issue.
Correct.
That we have that, because of all the rain.
Yes. And furthermore, but with the additional, for example, rain that we got last week and rain we received today, that stirs up the standing water. So the larva has, it delays their growth stages because you have that movement of water, the water flowing through basically. Over time, if you get into a dry period going forward, that could result in additional adult mosquitoes. But with these burkets, certainly with larvicide in that effort, that'll help tremendously.
I've used one in our old van pool, and it worked great. It works really good.
And Mason, you had mentioned that mosquitoes are an issue until the first freeze.
They can, the mosquito season is up really up until the first hard frost.
So which would be the end of October? Could be November, I mean, so we've still got August, September, October. Because we've still got potential for three months where this might be an issue.
Now, these burkets are also, they're good for 150 days. So once you place a burket in base, they're slow to resolve, and so they have essential inhibitors through the balance of our mosquito season.
Okay, so anybody else?
Just a question, do we discuss at all possibility of putting some sort of plumber in it for a tension condo right over there?
We talked about looking into a house, Kathy.
That's one of the main...
The biggest cost would be a lot of the surrounding properties, and we'd have to run electricity to that, which means we'd need some kind of an energy elemental agreement or something, pay the electricity bills or et cetera.
Did we sweep the fire department, say that we always access? We'd end up having to, you know...
I think somebody that was in here suggested that we could get that from Fisher, from the fire department.
Well, just access to it, I don't know if they're going to go ahead and pay for it.
There have been some discussions with the fire department. I don't anticipate that it would be an issue, but you know.
Because I think that could go a long way towards...
You know, there's solar, there's solar generated ones, there's all kinds of ones out there. We don't have the paperwork that kind of, so let's keep that separate. So where we're at right now is, unless anybody has anything else to add, a vote on the acceptance of this, and again, I think, if you want to accept this at this point, it's a yes, if you want to postpone this, it's a no.
Can we amend it to have, to also direct to provide more of those burkets?
Uh... There's only separate thing, I would have to be this. I would say that we could just direct staff to do that and...
Yeah, okay.
Will we amend it to show that we'll implement actually?
We might have a discussion about this next year, because they're going to have to submit a, let's do this. We're going to do a clean vote on this. If the board is all in favor, then we just direct staff to buy another case of whatever it is. Okay, we'll look at that. And we're going to obviously have to get Clark or whoever else to bid on this again next year because their prices are going to change.
Okay.
So are we okay with directing staff to get ready for this?
Correct.
Now, let me also, next year we'll continue with the larvicide. After initiative, the county will provide a string. It's an annual licensure licensing program.
Right.
It's a support for essential license to follow cats.
License to kill. License to kill.
Right. So make sure that that's an annual program.
Okay, good show.
All right.
So at this point, the vote is simply to accept or reject the proposal on mosquito management for this through Kathy.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Sal?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
While we're acting, that means that I don't want it for this year.
Correct. If you say no, you do not want it for this year. If you say yes, you want it for this year. Anybody want it?
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile. I think it's great.
Okay.
And the season goes into what, October? Into October?
Yes.
So...
Our first half of our process to that.
We're still another two.
Yeah, I know.
I said no.
Okay, sorry.
Would no? Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Molly?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. All right, move on. We need to approve, we need a motion on...
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution on the village of Easton Beach, King County, Illinois, accepting a bid and approving agreement in the amount of $287,959.71 for railroad construction for 28th Street and Cuthbert Drive.
Second?
Very good discussion on this.
Here I have a question for Phil. In the packet, you had asked that we go ahead and approve tentatively the difference between this $287 and the amount budgeted, which is another $37,000. Is that just move to move? Or is that going to provide, in the event we use that extra $37, additional work we've gotten in five or six items that we listed?
Correct. We, in our bid packet, we estimated patchy quantities. So once, we're currently locating our patchy locations now, so if we exceed our estimated quantity, so let's say our actuals exceed our estimate, we'd like authority to go up load beyond what is estimated.
The estimate came from Arrow. They told us what they'll do for $287,000. We initially budgeted three and a quarter. If we use that extra, it's going to be above and beyond what Arrow said they do.
Correct. They would have no issue with that.
Right.
Cool.
Okay, anyone else? Kathy.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Sal?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Molly?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, now that's controversial decision of the night. So this is a discussion and authorization, so I'll IDOT. We need a motion on this.
I'll make a motion for discussion and authorization to allow IDOT to work during the weekend hours starting 8:30 a.m. on Friday through 6 a.m. for the purpose of completing motor work on only Route 78.
Second?
Thank you. Should this be 8:30 p.m.?
8:30 a.m. through 6 a.m.? So they're going to work late?
Yeah, but it doesn't have a date either.
Oh.
Overnight.
So weekend hours, okay. So this is basically them asking us, can we work it back and try and finish this faster?
We're giving them permission when we get return.
We get our roads done faster and we get less traffic during the day.
So that's 8:30 p.m. on Friday to, I guess that's...
6 a.m. on Monday.
Yes, okay, cool.
Okay. Any issues? And discussion, Kathy.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Sal?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Molly?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, gee, we're going to proclaim this constitutionally. Okay, financial reports. We have a packet, wind down Wednesday, there's Wednesday coming up here. We had some good attendance for the last couple of events. Let's keep our fingers crossed and sacrificing the weight of the weather guys, and we should be good down. Let's go on the table, trustee Sal.
No report.
Trustee Anderson, right, right. Trustee Molly.
I do have an update regarding the Saturday market. I just found out that Tim, the farmer, who's been coming to this village for more than 20 years, is no longer going to be participating in the Saturday market because he's lacking funds and also because the promotion, the name of the market and everything else has gone away from farmers, so he feels like he's not getting the amount of customers that he needs. This is really sad for me because I feel like part of the community events that we've done on Sunday really damaged the Saturday market and it's focused on farmer's market. Granted, yes, we all know that it's both depot market and farmer's market. So I'm hoping that with the resources that we have, that we could work with the depot board, which I will be happy to participate in, in trying to get another farmer into this area for, either for Saturday or Sunday or some other day. We've brought a lot of people to the area, and I reached out to Tim, and I don't know if it's partially because of the health issue. And so, but I would, I would like to see if there's some way that we could try in either Indian drandies or some other local market to be here and to participate and bring that. I really feel like it's going to hurt that market.
The times all of us are always...
It hasn't, and honest to God, I went out to Woodstock this weekend, to the farmer's market there, just because...
Let's, maybe the three of us have a chat and see where we can mesh, because obviously the Saturday event is the depot market.
Yeah.
And the village doesn't really carry a lot of responsibility there, but we obviously all benefit from having people downtown. So let's see if we can meet and see if we can come up with some ideas.
Yeah, thank you.
If we talked to, going through Crystal Lake's, after their farmer's project, and this...
I talked, I've talked briefly to Bill the week before, last week, and he had yet to reach out to anybody yet, and I feel that there is some proactivity that needs to be encouraged, shall we say.
Okay.
Klein's, Klein's was a participant in the Sunday market as well. There were several small ones that would be good.
So move on, but separate here, so...
Yep.
Let's move on, come on, first time.
Just to say that I've said Hill's is underway. I noticed that changes made a place, so that's great also to the community. There's some of that advantage.
also to the community, the rest of the land.
Okay, we'll line up soon. Wood?
No.
Thank you, turning off.
No.
Very good, move aside to the village administrator.
Okay, as a reminder, I will be leaving on vacation on Wednesday. I'll be back August twentieth.
No, that won't be too long.
Don't break anything.
If you need something, please contact Brad, but I also do that through my emails. And then I don't wanna steal the chief's thunder, but I do wanna mention National Night Out is tomorrow, partnership with West Dundee, will be at the West Dundee Public Safety Building. I do, and Trustee Lyman and Trustee Anderson have agreed to come at the, at the five-thirty shift. If anybody else wants to volunteer, please let me know, we'll let him take part.
Good job.
Now, did you, would you like to come at four or five-thirty?
I'm gonna, whenever, it's convenient.
Four o'clock would be, four o'clock would be great.
Four, yeah, so.
All right, you know, four o'clock then.
Good.
Okay, and that's our report on today.
Very good, go to attorney. Go with attorney there. Chief for police.
Well, the, the event tomorrow is actually on the board in the afternoon until seven in the evening. We're looking forward to it, I think it's gonna be a terrific community event. National Night Out is being held nationwide, and in many communities in this region as well. Okay, so that's partnership between the two Dundees, and it's great that we'll have some trustees to join us, so I'm certainly looking forward to it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for the.
All right, I expect to run with this this evening, so we're heading down to public comment, non-agenda items. Oh, Chris, I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
All right, public comment on non-agenda items, if anybody'd like to address a board.
We have DM, Beams, Knights of Columbus, Ron Tony.
Sure, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you, hello, Lord. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of the Dundee area, and we're representing tonight the Knights of Columbus, you know, a fraternal do-gooder organization. I've been active in the community for many years, you've seen us roast the corn, you know, at Heritage Hill Roots Fest and the Hill Irish Fest, and they hit the parades, most recent one, Memorial Day Parade, where we got our grocer rolling down the street. And Kevin is with me, about fifteen-year Easton resident.
Yeah, he's kind of good.
Also, and it, Grace is a big part of the Oktoberfest, and submitted a paperwork to get that done, and stated which foods we'd like to provide. And a few days later, I was told that can't do that because you wanna favor Easton D-based organizations. With our involvement in the community, you know, being extensive, long-term, and also, you know, we satisfy the spiritual needs of hundreds of Easton D residents, so I certainly feel like, you know, part of the same community. And I ask that the board consider changing that and see if we can get in there and provide our much, we'll be looked for, people are looking for the corn, so we wanna satisfy the festgoers in mid-October. So please consider that, and I'd love to have a refusal in that decision, and if you could tell me who I may follow to contact, brings on that.
You can contact Administrator Johnson on that, and we'll have a discussion around that, and see if we can accommodate you. Appreciate your company.
Thank you.
They are very interested in this.
Absolutely. Okay, if anybody else, we are going to have the attorney make a motion to take us into executive session.
So I'll state a motion, if someone wants to make this, second, for the, to go into executive session for purposes of discussing employment, complaining about the performance of dismissal of employees of the village or collective negotiating matters involving the village's employees for communication, including approval of both session meetings. So move.
Second.
Okay, very good.
We got one? Yes.
Trustee Lyman?
Yes.
Trustee Sal?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.